...twenty-third in all the order. At this time, we're going right into discussing the marijuana articles with the planning board. Mark Rich is here.
Go ahead.
I'm calling the public board. It's going to be a present, so we have probably a free time for the board to order. It's going to be a present. It's time to call back to order to continue public hearing for the proposed bylaw changes and changes for marijuana establishments and number of recreational marijuana establishments.
All right, so we had anybody in the boardroom?
Recording?
Uh, please do.
All right. So, just to let everybody know who we are right now, we had a meeting with the town moderator, myself, the town administrator, Warren was there, and we had some questions about articles fourteen through nineteen. And we actually did a call to Mark Rich at that time to get his take on what was going to happen. So, I'm going to turn this part over to Mark so he can go over everything that we had discussed at that meeting. Go ahead.
Do you have extra copy of the boardroom?
David Yelich, people. Charlie, have one? Does that show?
Got it?
Exactly. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. So, obviously, for the purpose of town meeting, we're looking at articles fourteen and fifteen and sixteen and seventeen. Fourteen and fifteen are virtually identical, starting with a general bylaw and then a zoning bylaw, obviously, for the purpose of the planning board. Fifteen is important. Sixteen and seventeen, similarly, Article sixteen is a general, Article seventeen is zoning. As you all know, this is all new and uncharted territory, and in the discussions with the Attorney General, the Attorney General has essentially determined that these regulations are land use regulations, hence the zoning regulations. However, there's been some concern that based upon the quantum of vote issue, two-thirds vote, based upon the concern about grandfather and other issues, that these articles be placed forward as both general and zoning bylaws. I don't know how much of a concern that is to the planning board, because obviously the planning board is really only concerned about its report recommendations on the two zoning bylaws. So, I think the bigger concern is you have two essentially competing zoning bylaws, one for zero, zero percent is zero, and one for twenty percent. And the reasoning there, and I think the zero came out later, later in time, is that the regulation, the way the regulations are worded, there are three different types of limitations that a municipality can place on a marijuana establishment. And obviously, this is recreational, non-medical marijuana that we're talking about. And one of the restrictions would be for limiting the number of marijuana establishments to fewer than twenty percent of the off-premises alcohol license, package store licenses that are granted. So, if the town is going to limit to fewer than twenty percent, that will trigger a requirement for a ballot question. The fewer can also be zero. So, you could limit, you could limit to fewer than twenty percent, or you could prohibit. That's another regulatory standard. So, in terms of the regulation, in terms of the bylaw that said zero percent, that's prohibition on a type of medical marijuana, a non-medical marijuana establishment being a retailer. So, that'd be a prohibition. That would trigger a requirement of a ballot question. If that ballot question failed, then that limitation would not be deemed valid in the town, because the statute as it's worded right now, since the Free Town voted yes on question four, requires town meeting action on the bylaw and then the ballot question action on the same bylaw. So, the purpose of the twenty percent bylaw would be to have that in place. If the ballot question fails, the other one, which is twenty percent, not fewer than twenty percent, does not require a ballot question, and that would survive. So, if it, if the ballot question failed and did not have the twenty percent question, then you would have no limitation whatsoever. Now, if the ballot question passes, then, in my opinion, the more stringent bylaw would govern, and chances are what would be recommended would be at a future town meeting to rescind the twenty percent, the less restrictive bylaw, just to clarify so that the books are clean. But what you'd have initially would be a zero percent pass of the ballot and a twenty percent, arguably the zero percent of zero, would govern because it's the more restrictive. And at a future town meeting, we would simply seek to rescind the less restrictive bylaw in order to eliminate that confusion.
So, at a board meeting, there was discussion on whether we should withdraw the zero if Article fourteen passed, and your recommendation would be?
My concern about that, obviously, if the determination is a policy decision, if the determination is that the twenty percent is satisfactory, the town is comfortable with twenty percent and gets past the twenty percent, that's a policy decision as to whether to make a motion to pass over the zero. The zero is more restrictive. So, that's really a policy decision as to whether the town wants to go that extra step, which is further. One would allow the twenty percent of the licenses, and I believe that would allow one as it stands right now. Of course, if your license quota went up, your number, potential number of retailers could go up depending upon where that twenty percent fell. But the zero is a straight zero, it's a straight prohibition. So, that really becomes a policy decision.
So, if we were to, just for conversation's sake, if we were to pass all of these articles, then it would mean that we would have a ballot question. If that ballot question were to prohibit, then we prohibit, and if that's okay, because we've done full sets of things that we've had to do.
For retailers only?
Correct. But if that ballot question then fails and they say no, then we go back to?
But twenty percent would survive.
The twenty percent, and that would survive?
Right, right. So, that becomes a bit of a policy question. Certainly, you know, if the zero failed, you would not want to pass over the twenty percent if you want to have any protection, but you have to decide in reverse. But again, only the zero is subject to a ballot question. Twenty percent is above what it requires, above the threshold.
You could put them both, you could put them both on the ballot tonight, make the vote on both of them.
Right, right. Tonight's not a ballot.
And then if they, and then you do the ballot and see.
And then have a ballot.
The ballot only.
Survivors.
Yep. That makes sense. That makes sense to me, but.
I understand why it seems confusing, because you've got two competing standards. But I think it's kind of a just-in-case situation, because you don't know what's going to happen. We have, we have a relatively small number of folks who turn out for our town meeting. Presumably, more people will turn out, you don't know for sure, but you presumably have more people at the election.
And this would be a special ballot, because we don't have a ballot scheduled beginning now on April first.
So, you'd have to give notice to the town clerk, you have to give notice at least thirty-five days of, and a whole special election, and undertake that. Jackie knows exactly how to do that.
Any questions for the board?
If they both fail?
I think you've got, I think you've got a lot of time left.
We have a temporary one for them.
Right, right. You have no, you would have time to do, you have nothing at this time. Now, it's interesting, and I mentioned, no, I didn't mention this to you, because I mentioned to someone else, there is a concern that's been raised right now that the industry may be challenging these moratoria. So many towns have imposed moratoria throughout the state, the industry is very surprised by that. It wasn't expected. There is a suggestion that the industry may be challenging the moratoria, suggesting that moratorium itself is a ban, a prohibition, outright prohibition, because nothing can be done during that period, and therefore should be subject to a ballot question. We don't agree. We think that a prohibition is, is a prohibition, is a permanent disallowance, whereas a moratorium is a temporary action. But we will, we should be discussing at a later point whether to have a ballot question, especially if you do want to have a ballot question on the zero, it would make sense to throw on a ballot question also about the moratorium. It just.
To reaffirm the moratorium, if you like, or?
Essentially, essentially. I think the moratorium starts December thirty-first.
Ours is June thirty.
Oh, was yours too, June thirty?
Yep.
Okay. I couldn't remember what date you chose. It's interesting, only because the licensing will not start until June first.
That you can apply as of April.
April first.
April first of the application.
Right, so I think you get some statutory rights just by putting an application.
You do, you do, you do. But the problem, again, the problem, the problem now that we're seeing is the potential of those moratoria will be challenged, so whether you want to put it.
But the twenty percent would survive any of those challenges, if it's in place tonight.
It would survive that particular challenge. I, we can't give any guarantees on anything, because we haven't seen any litigation yet, and nobody at this point has, has passed and had challenged a twenty percent bylaw, which presumably does not require a ballot question, because the statute specifically says fewer than twenty percent should be the ballot. Whether that's going to be challenged, at this point, it seems consistent with the statute. It's just, we're in somewhat uncharted territory.
This is the last piece of the puzzle, as I see it.
Hopefully.
You know, even if we pass the twenty percent and they vote the moratorium, it's unconstitutional if you vote. We've already got zoning in place, we have special permanent process in place. You know, this is the last piece.
You've done a lot more than a lot of other towns. A lot of towns are relying on the moratorium now and haven't done any planning process at all. Obviously, you're ahead of the game in that. If you get this in place, the twenty percent gives you that added level of protection specifically for retailers. If this doesn't pass, what you've already done, you've got an article in place.
Well, just the purpose of my question, I think, from a planning perspective, if I'm going to be asked to make a recommendation, I would just make the recommendation that one or the other get passed, so we can continue on this path. So that if they both fail, now we have to pay for and advertise another town meeting, another ballot, you know, we have to go to ballot, and then we get stuck getting up against the time of April first. So, I think, if anything, the people have to understand, I think it's a critical thing that they decide on one or the other or both tonight, but.
My personal recommendation would be recommend both, only because it's a ballot-suspenders situation, unless, unless you don't favor the zero and you only favor the twenty, and obviously, there's a balancing.
Right, right.
But, you know, the zero goes to the ballot, that's the more restrictive, and if you feel that, that you want to be more restrictive, recommend both. If you feel that having twenty percent, which is, which would allow one at the current time, and again, we're only talking about retailers, I know you've got your, the other thing we've got, obviously, tonight, is the overlay district. But in terms of this prohibitory language of limiting, these two, they do serve two different goals. One is to prohibit retailers, so you will not have a retail establishment at all. The other one is to allow essentially one at this time.
If the zoning article fails, that establishes the overlay, that puts it recreationally in the overlay, then no one would have them there.
Then, well, then you don't have.
Would be no zoning restrictions, correct?
Yeah, in some ways, Article nineteen is probably.
The most important of all of them, I understand.
I think that's probably why you're, the only question on that.
I think we can say that we have to pass that, because even if we're going to have recreational growers and research and development, they do need a place to go, so.
Yeah, this is.
No, not the pawn shops, we need to have.
It's the most important article, really.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is beyond retailers. This is everybody. Yes, this is, I would think this has been your biggest focus. And I know the language is added to allow by special permit, so it gives you the option to condition it as a special permit.
And even if the zero, if zero passes, both ballot question, doesn't mean in a year from now, or two years from now, it can't be brought up again. And if the zoning's not in place, it would be, you know.
Well, if zoning's not in place and nothing else is in place, as of April first, you'll get the applications, and as of June first, you're going to get the licenses. And what happens is the Cannabis Control Commission will be asking the town, is there any zoning that would prohibit these licenses from being issued? You have to say no. And then you're, it's open season.
It's open.
I could see the industry getting a grassroots effort into, you know, petition bylaw, you know, town meetings. I could see that happening, should we not get out in front of it, and I.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Especially for younger towns.
Yeah, especially for younger towns. It'll be interesting to see what the industry has going on right now. I know that everything that we're doing in all the communities, and I've been, I've been talking about this in a number of communities, the moratoria have passed in a number of communities. Again, yours versus a little shorter than the others, but again, you're ahead of them. Some of the towns just haven't done anything, but there are a lot of towns looking at this. A number of towns have rejected the prohibitions, but many of the prohibitions were broader than yours. I think when they're narrow prohibitions such as retailers, just keep in mind, marijuana establishments, that's a very large definition. You've limited, and you're allowed to do that under the legislation. That, you know, that, that has been more attractive to communities, where they realize it's, it's not preventing the entire industry, it's just determining what aspects of the industry will be allowed in the town, giving you some control, which is intended by the state.
How many alcohol overreleases do you pass by? So, beer wine might get all of them, or beer wine.
That's why twenty percent is one.
Right.
Fewer than twenty percent is fewer than one, which is zero.
Now, excuse me, is it, would you average the number? So, if we, two more open up, you'd get 1.2 percent? Would that still be one, or would that round up to the next, next person's licensing?
Because you're saying twenty percent.
Right.
Twenty percent, if it's six, it's 1.2.
Correct.
So, you would round up.
That's my question. You'd still round, it wouldn't be?
It couldn't.
One over, 1.1 over the one would trigger a second one.
Yeah. And we had a long discussion with the Attorney General about whether, even with the fewer than twenty percent, whether we should be using a number for the percentage, because these things can change. It's a very awkwardly written piece of legislation, and the Attorney General essentially said she would have preferred either one. But it's interesting how, obviously, your prohibition is zero, you're not saying fewer than twenty. In your case, fewer than twenty would be zero anyway, as it stands right now. But you're, you're saying that it's twenty percent as the non-ballot question, and so you'd have to, you'd have to get to twenty, or ten.
Ten.
Ten, yeah, it's going up, yeah.
Any other questions?
Ed, do you recommend, don't recommend?
Yeah, I guess.
Well.
Are we going to recommend all, all of them, and go forward with a ballot question, or are we going to withdraw one?
I'd probably follow the Attorney's advice and recommend all, all four. I'll make that as a motion.
Oh, favor.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, is there anybody here from the public here interested in speaking to the planning board relative to this public hearing? All right.
I'm looking to trample the floor.
I know.
Thank you, Kevin.
Sure, right.
Mrs. Doris.
Yeah, right. I, you know, it's interesting, because we've had these conversations, they've had internal, we've had internal, the what-if, the ends, and I think we're all on the same page. We need to protect ourselves. Yeah, it is a bit head spinning, but I think we all know what the process is, and we know that we need to minimize our exposure.
Right.
So, my personal feeling, before I close the public hearing, we put this to a vote, is that, that we would recommend all, and if that's not the case, that at minimum, we would recommend Article twenty-two.
I would be, before I sit on that board, like, you abstained tonight, vote, because they're already just voting on this board. No, you can, you can close.
We don't want them.
Well, that's.
Deb, do you have any feel?
No, I think that George wasn't in the capacity to make a decision, which I might have to wait.
And obviously, I think the moderator's going to have me speak to the public as well.
Bob, I'm going to take your motion in the last meeting, as to what you want. You're also in your opinion on the board side.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to close vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that being said, does anybody have a motion? Or I'll entertain a motion that, that we in fact recommend all four zoning articles relative to the recreational marijuana.
Reginald, two zoning articles.
There's general.
Two general bylaws.
Right, so are we not required to give a recommendation on the general?
You're not required.
That's what I did.
You can if you want to.
That's why I asked when we were having a public hearing, before we were having a public hearing, I was just the zoning portion of those two things.
Even though they're actually identical.
Right. So, I apologize. Could catch more.
On the motion that we recommend Article fifteen and seventeen.
Motion to remain in support of two, recommend both articles, fifteen and seventeen for adoption. May for discussion on the motion. Coming on all with papers in March today, I is carrying.
And you've had a separate hearing on Article eighteen?
Yeah, we have. I had a, I had a question. I think we'll, I think we'll.
Yep, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
You're taking off the percentage.
Yeah. Eleven percent, and the numbers are.
Oh, the chapter section?
Yeah.
Eleven.
Eleven thirty-two is going to turn into eleven thirty-four, section forty-two.
We had a meeting on Friday, two, two and a half hours, talking about the, it just seems like it's just. When Jonathan was giving you advice, he was calling me, we were, you know.
Fourteen, sixteen, fifty.
No, we don't know.
No, Article, Article eleven thirty-two and entry of eleven thirty.
Yeah. I want to be up there in nervous after that one session. We had a couple people there.
Sixteen is.
I'll send you the bill.
Let me know before we start. You're going to, you have to do all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're going to want to is changing section eleven thirty-two and adding Article thirty-one and inserting percent in its symbol.
What's thirty-one, do you want to move?
More? Article sixteen is a motion to amend. The wording is by striking the words eleven point three two and replacing them with the words Article thirty-one.
Because that's the general bylaw, so that's going to be different sections.
So, we're not hiding an article, then, which is?
Speaking to a, because it's a whole new article.
Section eleven is the zoning bylaw. Article thirty-one is to protect the bylaws, is that right?
Yeah.
That's one.
So, not on tonight's Article thirty-one, when a, add an article.
No, 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 no.
I was looking forward to.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. Yeah, not a one or an article.
Why are you trying to make things more difficult?
I'm not trying to make things.
His head is spinning.
It is.
He's got both sides of his head tonight. He's pretty in pain tonight.
You don't know where he's sitting.
So, just, when other towns are trying, is this going to happen if, if it's possible to do it?
That's great. I think we can do the explanation, because that's key.
Explanation of what?
Between the two of us, but it has been very confusing.
I'll entertain a motion that Deb Robbins.
Yeah, I know. But you were, I understand it now completely. Yeah, Mark's going to speak for us.
And if I, if I.
You did a great job, actually, you should.
We do it more, more often.
I'll keep it brief, yes. All right, is there anything else for the planning board? Is there anything else on our agenda, Dan?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
And then we'll come back. And then when we come back, all we have is.
Sure. I have a minute to discuss Article twenty-nine.
We have a motion, but we don't have the amount.
Twenty-nine. We was splitting fifty-fifty, so in the end, you get a number.
Yeah, but.
That wasn't a good one.
Because at our meeting, there's an extra three hundred and. Three hundred, yep. Just three, right? So, so do you want to put the fifty-fifty and the three hundred? Fifty in stabilization, fifty percent in capital stabilization, if we add a three hundred thousand in capital stabilization, or do you want to just leave that in free cash?
First of all.
So, you only leave the three alone in free cash and then split? The reason tax, so you don't want to levy it?
Three hundred, that's about.
Yeah, it's new growth.
New growth?
Yeah. I mean, we could leave three hundred in free cash.
Just the way we do it.
Levy to three and let, we split, take three hundred off and then split that in half.
Right.
Is that what you want to do?
Add the levy to that, so it's split, and then take three hundred from the split, so if the numbers still work, I will leave three hundred in free cash based on what comes up today.
Okay. But you have that paper, you just. I can do that, yeah. So, she's just going to. No, we're going to, because then all companies, we keep all their money, so we have extra three hundred to.
It leaves us, it leaves in free for us, but.
Right, but when we go with budgeting, I don't want that three hundred to be up for grabs, so it's easier. But, you know, we can do this, just.
Since we're, the board is in session. It's unclear what you guys.
Oh, you can't hear us. Talking about Article twenty-nine.
Article twenty-nine.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what, what's on the agenda.
So, this, since Article twenty-nine is the capital stabilization, stabilization of money in at the time, there's three hundred thousand dollars in new growth that is not levy yet. So, at the end of the meeting, when we ask for, not a recommendation, but ask for the numbers from the town accountant, we're all on the same page. Charlie, you follow?
Generally.
Okay, so the three hundred has to be levy.
Right.
Okay, but we're going to levy it, and then we're going to keep it in free cash, and then we're going to take what, what we have right now and split it fifty in capital stabilization and fifty in regular stabilization.
And leave the three.
And leave the three hundred.
Add three hundred.
No, no. You saw that email, right? That has nothing to do with that. This is just a new growth.
So, this is an extra three hundred.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm.
Okay, all right. Do you want that as a motion?
Why don't we, we need a motion.
We're going to do a town meeting. You can make a recommendation then, I just wanted to know what I should put down. That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you want to go to executive session?
Yeah. Thank you, Pam, for reminding me. All right, I entertain a motion to go into the executive session, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one.
Oh, right, right, right.
About strategy with respect to litigation in open, may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public party, which shows chair, so declares Excel Recycling LLC versus Lisa Pacheco, Robert Jones, and Charles Sullivan individually, and as no result, is left for. What's aboard the pleasure?
I think a motion to go into executive session.
You have a second?
I'll be.
I'll set that on. All in favor. Eleven.
The appointed hour having arrived and the quorum being present, we'll call the town meeting to order. First thing I want to ask everybody, if you've got that pink vote ticket, just kind of hold that up in the air for a second, so we see that you have it. If you don't have the pink vote ticket, it means you're not a voter, and you've got to be in the front two rows of the audience. So, looks like everybody's okay. Before we start, the selectmen have asked to make a statement, so I'm going to let them go, and then we'll start up again.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Jones, I'd like to introduce everyone to our town administrator, Mr. David Demarche. He comes to us from the towns of Carlisle, Uxbridge, Millbury, and lastly Plymouth. He comes with a wealth of knowledge, and I hope that everybody stops by his office and says hello to him. Mr. Demarche? I would also like to thank the Free Town Fire Department, dispatchers, and the Police Department for bringing awareness to breast cancer during Breast Cancer Awareness Month by creating and displaying these vibrant pink T-shirts. Month by creating and displaying these vibrant pink T-shirts, and I really do want to thank you because, um, it's, it's something that needs to be done, um, and your help has been wonderful, so thank you. And lastly, if you came in, I'm sure you saw a, a big poster outside, um, that is the future police department, um, station. Um, we're just working on that now, it's not set in stone, we still continue to do the process, um, and make sure that whatever we bring to the taxpayers and the voters is something that should come through to fruition. So we've spent, um, a long time, it's still, um, a ways to go before we're finalized everything, but, um, it's just to bring awareness to you, to let you know that, um, we are working on it and hopefully we'll have something to you, um, by early, um, in the winter season, so thank you. And now I will turn it back over to our town administrator. Our town moderator, sorry. David, it's not your turn.
I'll switch, he gets a lot more than four hundred dollars. All right, so we called the, uh, town meeting to order previously, I will call upon the town clerk to read the warning and the return.
Warrant for the special town meeting Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock PM. Bristol County, to either of the constables in the town of Free Town. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Free Town, who are qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet in the Free Town Elementary School Auditorium, forty-three Bullock Road, East Free Town, Massachusetts, the twenty-third day of October, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock PM, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places, the Sonnet Post Office, East Free Town Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Free Town, Junior's Convenience Store, and Free Town Town Hall, and the Free Town Communications Center. Hereof they will not make return of the original warrant with your doings thereof immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts, given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this fifth day of October, anno domini two thousand and seventeen, signed by the Free Town Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Free Town, Massachusetts, October fifth, two thousand seventeen, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein, signed Carlton Abbott, Junior Constable. We have the pink vote tickets on today to use, we only have one, sometimes we have a special, so sometimes we have two. Is there anybody that's recording this meeting, other than the cable? Thank you.
Okay. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds to sum of fourteen thousand dollars to purchase and/or repair dumpsters and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health Agent, requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article and that it be funded by taxation.
Motion, Dr. Brett?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article one as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Davis Dean, thirty-eight North Main Street. Uh, this one is coming out of taxation?
Yes.
They're gonna raise.
You, you gotta stand up and say who you are first.
This is for South Main Street, this is gonna be increasing taxes, and how much? Or is it coming out of current? Four? This is not, he's asking that we're gonna have to raise taxes in order to fund this, or are we gonna take this out of our own reserve fund retained earnings, general taxation, whatever? Is that correct, sir?
Yes, that is correct.
It's already, I'm sorry, um, it's already concluded in the levy, it doesn't come out of capital stabilization and stabilization, it's already in the levy limit.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of six thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents from retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying unpaid bills or taking the action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, it requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to adopt, Brett?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article two, are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article two is adopted unanimously. Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars from retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of retiring the outstanding bond anticipation note by transfer to the Water Capital Project Fund for improvements to the water filter site, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, it requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to adopt, Brett?
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article three as read, is there any discussion?
Davis Dean, thirty-eight North Main Street. Basically, what I'd like to know is, back in June, we were talking about the money needed for the water, keeping the water pure. Is this related to that? In other words, is it, is it?
No, these are other improvements, this is a loan that Doug already spent, correct? It's not, yeah. This was a prior year's loan for improvement to the site, that the Water and Sewer Commission is paying off, and I don't want to speak for my chairman, he's around here somewhere. That's Bob Hattigan.
Yeah, no, this, uh, this money is already in our funds. We're just paying the bill that came due, and we have to have, of course, permission from the town to use our money to pay the bill.
Yeah, I'm just curious of the overall, what we talked about in June, as to, we took, we're, we were hoping not to spend some money in what, what, because of doing the water flow testing.
Oh, this has nothing to do with that, this is just an old, this is, uh, I don't know, ten or twelve years.
At some point, if, if we approach that subject tonight, I would like it, like the end.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Uh, Mr. Dean, we have not used any of the six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars as of yet, um, that money is still set aside, like we voted on in June, we're working with DEP right now, and we are working on a resolution, and we are, hopefully, fingers crossed, what we've been working on is, um, something that's acceptable to DEP.
So, what I'm gathering is that the, the temp, the intermediate, intermediate, intermediate flowing of water through the hydrants had alleviated the problem during the summer.
So far, so good, um, but like I said, we met with DEP just a brief time ago, and we're waiting for, um, their final word.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any further discussion on article three? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article three is adopted unanimously. I'll just remind everybody, um, if you're gonna speak, usually you come up to the microphone, just identify yourself in some way, name at the very least, um, not that we're a huge crowd tonight, but. Okay? Not that we're a huge crowd tonight, but, um. That way everybody can hear you, if you come up to most of the microphones. Article four, to see if the town will vote to supplement the amount raised from Water Sewer Enterprise revenues for fiscal year eighteen, previously voted in article fifteen of the annual town meeting of June fifth, two thousand seventeen, by the sum of eight thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars, to be allocated to the general fund for the purpose of funding increases in indirect costs previously appropriated in the omnibus budget, article one of the annual town meeting of June fifth, two thousand seventeen, or take any action, other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, it requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to adopt is read?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt article four is read, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article four is adopted unanimously. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of creating an extra unforeseen reserve fund with funding from retained earnings, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, it requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion adopted, read?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article five is read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article five is adopted unanimously. Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of retiring the outstanding bond anticipation note by transfer to the Capital Project Fund for the rehabilitation of the South Main Street and Locust Street bridges, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve is read?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve article six is read, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article six is adopted unanimously. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars from retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of increasing budget line item professional and technical engineering services, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion adopted, read?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article seven is read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seven is adopted unanimously. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of nine thousand dollars from the Highway Personnel Budget, account number zero zero one four four two zero five one one zero nine zero three zero three zero zero zero, to the Highway Expense Budget, account number zero zero one four four two zero five five eight zero nine thousand forty zero zero, and/or take any action relative thereto, this was submitted by the Highway Surveyor, requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion adopted, read?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article eight as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eight is adopted unanimously. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of nine thousand dollars to pay the cost of consultants and related professionals for evaluating the existing police, fire, and highway department radio system, infrastructure, and related equipment, and making recommendations for improvement to the system and related equipment, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the police and fire chiefs, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article, this article will be funded by taxation.
Motion, Brett?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article nineteen as read? Article nine, I'm sorry. Uh, is there any discussion on article nine? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article nine is adopted unanimously. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, inserted by Section one ninety-three of the so-called Municipal Modernization Act, Chapter two eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, allowing the Board of Selectmen to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour in any thickly settled or business district in the town that is not a state highway, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the police and fire chiefs, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
adopted, read?
Seconded.
A motion is made and seconded to adopt article ten as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article ten is adopted unanimously. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws Chapter ninety, Section eighteen B, inserted by Section one ninety-four of the so-called Municipal Modernization Act, Chapter two eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, allowing the Board of Selectmen to establish designated safety zones with a speed limit of twenty miles per hour, on, at, or near any way in the town that is not a state highway, and if a state highway, with the approval of the Department of Transportation, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the police and fire chiefs, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve is read?
Motion is made and seconded to adopt article eleven as read, is there any discussion?
Vincent Farrell, one one five South Main Street, can you classify what a safety zone is?
Okay, um, police chief will answer that.
Hi, Carlton Abbott, Chief of Police. A safety zone would be defined, uh, by the Department of Transportation, but would include, but not be limited to areas in front of playgrounds, parks, etc., and the Board of Selectmen could take a vote to designate those specific safety zones with a, a twenty mile per hour speed zone, subject to the approval of the Mass Department of Transportation. So, DOT has specific guidelines that you have to pass in order for the ultimate approval and implementation.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on article eleven? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eleven is adopted unanimously. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, representing the town's share of a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant, to purchase two new CPR compression devices for the fire department ambulances, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the fire chief, requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article, and this article will be funded by taxation.
Motion, sir?
Motion is made and seconded to approve article twelve as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twelve is adopted unanimously. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the fee in and to the parcel of land located at one twenty-two Richmond Road, Sonin, Assessors Map two oh two, Lot four point zero one, by deed in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to the provisions of General Laws Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven C, for general municipal purposes, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Treasurer, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt article thirteen as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article, okay, now we have the art, explanations for the next article. Articles. Harmonic microphone. Articles fourteen and fifteen are proposed general and zoning bylaws that would set the number of recreational marijuana, non-medical retail establishments in town to twenty percent of the number of package store licenses issued. Presently, there are five such licenses issued. Articles sixteen and seventeen are proposed general and zoning bylaws that would completely prohibit the citing of recreational marijuana, non-medical retail establishments within Free Town. The passage of this bylaw would need to be supplemented by a ballot vote of the town at a future date to affirm or reject the action at town meeting. Article nineteen is an amendment to our existing medical marijuana overlay district zoning bylaw that would allow for recreational marijuana establishments to locate within the overlay district. There are a number of people who are going to provide explanations and discussion on these articles. Before we get into them, um, by request, I will ask at this time if there is a motion to vote on Articles fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen using the yes and no ballots. I heard somebody say move.
Don't move.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Moderator, what's the question, sir?
All right, the question is whether to vote on Articles fourteen through seventeen with the yes and no ballots, this was a request that was made by a couple of different people last week. That basically means that instead of taking a voice vote, you would get a little piece of paper that has the word yes on one side and no on the other. You tear it in half and put it in a box, and the police officers then count the votes. It's basically a secret ballot for a town meeting. So that is, that was the request, that is the motion, there has been no second. So that is, that was the request, that is the motion. There has been no second. What's that?
Just for those four articles?
Just for those four articles. It was only requested for Fourteen through Seventeen. All right, there was no second, so that's easy enough. There's no second, so we won't do that. It's, it's a procedure that's allowed, but it requires a vote, so when somebody asks for it, I have to put it out there whether or not we want to vote to do that. With no second, the motion will fail, and we'll just proceed to do the regular voting on these articles. So, um, also, Article Fourteen contains an error. Uh, I believe on the warrant, it says that it requires a two-thirds vote. It actually only requires a majority vote. So Article Fourteen requires a majority vote. Fifteen is a two-thirds, sixteen is a majority, and seventeen is a two-thirds. So we'll proceed with Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen, to see if the town of Freetown will vote to amend the town's general bylaw by adding a new section to limit the number of recreational marijuana retailers to 20% of the number of retail off-premises, package store alcoholic beverage licenses issued under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter One Thirty-Eight, or take any action relating thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote, remember that's the title on the warrant. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The Selectmen have asked that you know that they also recommend this article. And, uh, as soon as we have a motion, then we'll proceed to people explaining things.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. Um, I don't know who wants to go first. Town, Town Council will now explain why we're voting on these things the way that we are.
Thank you, Mr. Moder- Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, through you to the meeting. Um, I think you, it'd be helpful with, with your indulgence if we could have a discussion of Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen. I think that might be useful to the voters, if you so allow.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
No problem.
So I'm sure a lot of you have noticed that Article Fourteen and Article Fifteen are essentially identical. Uh, Article Fourteen is a general bylaw seeking to limit the number of recreational marijuana retailers to a number of 20% of the number of off-premises package store licenses currently issued by the town. And number, Article Fifteen is the same article framed as a zoning bylaw. Article Sixteen seeks to limit it to a number of zero, which is a prohibition of retail sales within the, in the town through a general bylaw. And Article Seventeen is a zoning bylaw seeking to accomplish the same prohibition. So a lot of you might be wondering, why do we have, um, two different sets of competing standards? Why do we have two of each, and why two at all? So to start with, um, as many of you remember, there was, uh, the ballot question, Question Four, a couple of years ago, that sought to legalize recreational marijuana in the Commonwealth. And as did many, many communities in the Commonwealth, the town of Freetown voted yes on that petition ballot question. So that was a petition special act that then, uh, was, was approved by the voters. The General Court and the Governor then reviewed that, that petition, uh, piece of legislation and determined that there were flaws in that legislation. It was very complicated. There was some language issues. There were actually a lot of language issues, and issues of enforcement and interpretation. So the legislature and then the Governor spent quite a bit of time determining how to improve that language, clarify that language, make it more usable and user-friendly. The result is a revised piece of legislation, which I won't call entirely usable and user-friendly, but, uh, I guess it's an improvement on what was. But unfortunately, it leaves, uh, quite a bit for interpretation and determination by you, the voters, in the town of Freetown. What the statute allows, it allows certain mechanisms for the restriction, prohibition, or limitation of retail marijuana, recreational marijuana establishments within the town. Now this is, just for all your information, what we're talking about right now is non-medical. So the medical marijuana issue is not something we're talking about right now. We're talking about recreational marijuana. And these particular bylaws, all four that are proposed by these articles, deal with recreational marijuana retailers. Doesn't deal with growers, doesn't deal with testing laboratories. It deals specifically with retail establishments. Establishments where these, these products would be sold. So what we have is Article, in Article Fourteen and Article Fifteen, identical articles, general and then zoning, that allow a restriction up to 20%, restriction of 20% of your package store licenses. You currently have five package store licenses, so 20%, you would have, you would have a single retail license available for retail sale of marijuana products in, in the town of Freetown. Now, the way the actual statute is worded, in order to have a regulation that would limit to fewer than 20%, and in your case, fewer than one is zero, hence the zero in the second two sets of, of bylaws, Articles Sixteen and Seventeen, in order to do that, it's actually a two-step process. You would have to vote it as a bylaw at town meeting, and then it would have to go to a ballot question. If the ballot question failed, if the voters at a special election on the ballot determined not to uphold or not to, uh, essentially, uh, ratify the vote taken at town meeting, then that restriction, that zero restriction would go away, because that being an actual prohibition requires the ballot question. So if that went away, but you vote yes on the 20%, the 20% being more than what is allowed of, what requires a ballot question, that would survive. So you would have the restriction to one license or 20%. Obviously, the number could go up if the number of retail package stores goes up, but right now it would be one license. That would survive regardless of what happens at the ballot. If, however, the ballot question passes, and it, it affirms the actions under Articles Sixteen and Seventeen, which are an actual prohibition, that more restrictive bylaw of, which would allow for no licenses at all, a zero number, that would, that would be the controlling bylaw, because that's more restrictive. So even though you would have voted the 20%, and you would have voted the zero, if zero passes at the ballot, that would be the controlling bylaw, and I would imagine at some point in the future, you would probably be asked at another town meeting to rescind the 20% since it would no longer be necessary, and it would have essentially been superseded by the, the zero, the prohibition language. The reason we're doing both a zoning bylaw and a general bylaw goes back to my comment earlier about the user-friendliness of the, the existing legislation. In discussions with the Attorney General's Office, we have come to the conclusion that it is likely that this kind of regulation would be considered a regulation of land and land use, and therefore be subject to zoning. However, there are certain issues still being worked out. There are concerns about licensing itself and how licenses are, are imposed. There are concerns about grandfathering, which is a concept under zoning. So at this time, the recommendation still remains to, as a, essentially a belt and suspenders approach, to have both a zoning and a general bylaw. They have different quantum of vote. A zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. A general bylaw requires a simple majority. So obviously, if the general, the general bylaws come up first, if, if you can't get a simple majority for one of these, you're probably not going to get the two-thirds on the zoning. But at, at that point, be, be mindful that if these bylaws do not pass, then other than, other than the zoning implications, which I know are addressed in Article Nineteen, and with respect to a, a temporary moratorium that has already been put in place by the town, you will, you will not have specific protections in the town, I should say restrictions, limitations, with respect to retail marijuana sales. So what, obviously, if these do not pass, you'll be looking to Article Nineteen to provide some zoning context for the, the, uh, the, the sale of recreational marijuana, and that would, would not be triggered until the moratorium that has already been passed would conclude, uh, next June. So, right now, the way the statute stands, retail recreational marijuana, uh, licensed, licensed applicants, their, their applications will be, will be accepted at the state as of April 1st, 2018. And licenses will actually be generated and approved as of June 1st, 2018. If you have voted a prohibition before that time, and if the prohibition has been approved by the, the voters at a special election, then at the time when applications are made for retail licenses, the state will ask the town whether there is zoning in place that pro, that would prohibit these operations. If that prohibition has been voted, that answer would be yes, and those licenses would not be granted. If the limitation is to 20% to one license, one licensee would, would get that one license, and anybody after that would not be able to get a license. So that's what we're facing tonight. It seems a bit complicated, and obviously I'm here to answer whatever questions you have, but trying to make it as simple as possible. So, uh, Fourteen and Fifteen, identical articles, would give a, a limitation to 20% or currently one license for retail sale of recreational marijuana. Articles Sixteen and Seventeen would be an outright prohibition of retail sales within the town of Freetown, subject to approval by a ballot question at a special election. Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so, that was a lot, obviously, um, necessary, though. So we'll, we'll go ahead with Fourteen and, like Council said, if anybody has any questions, get up and ask. Council's here, Planning Board's here, everybody's here. Somebody will have the answer, hopefully. Article Fourteen, to see if the town of Freetown will vote to amend the town's general bylaw by adding a new section to limit the number of recreational marijuana retailers to 20% of the number of retail off-premises, package store, alcoholic beverage licenses issued under Mass. General Laws, Chapter One Thirty-Eight, or take any action relating thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The Selectmen have also recommended the article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. And again, this one only requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion or questions on Article Fourteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, to see if the town of Freetown will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by adding a new section, eleven point three two, to limit the number of recreational marijuana retailers to 20% of the number of off, of retail off-premises, package store, alcoholic beverage licenses issued under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter One Thirty-Eight, or take any other action relating thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The Board of Selectmen also recommends this article. And we will now hear a report from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Demaris, Chairman of the Freetown Planning Board. Freetown Planning Board also recommends adoption with an amendment to the article. Uh, I would like to move that the article be amended to, uh, strike the numbers eleven point three two. Excuse me, excuse me. And insert in their place the, uh, numbers eleven point three four.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to amend Article Fifteen to change the number eleven point three two to eleven point three four, which sounds like it's just to correct a typographical error. Is that right?
It is, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment. This only requires a majority vote since it's amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment is adopted. That, we will now read eleven point three four. We now need a main motion on the article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Fifteen with that amendment. Is there any discussion on Article Fifteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaw by adding a new section, eleven point three two, to set the number of recreational marijuana retailers to zero percent and not allow recreational retail sales within the town of Freetown. A copy of the proposed bylaw may be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office located at 3 North Main Street, Asonah, Mass. 02702, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The Selectmen have also recommended this article.
Mr. Moderator, uh, I make a motion that we adopt, uh, with a, an amendment. I would amend, uh, I would make a motion that we amend the article to read, striking the words "Section Eleven Point Three Two" and replacing them with the words "Article Thirty-One", that's due to the fact that this is a general protective bylaw and not a zoning bylaw. Additionally, I move to amend Article Sixteen by striking the word "percent", additionally the "percent" symbol, please.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion to amend Article Sixteen by changing Section Eleven Point Three Two to Article Thirty-One? And to remove the word "percent" and the "percent" symbol. So that would read, uh, a new sec, a new Article Thirty-One to set the number of recreational marijuana retailers to zero. So that is a motion to amend. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment is adopted by the majority. We will now move on the, uh, the article itself with that amendment, and, uh, I need a motion on that. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article, Article Sixteen as amended. Is there any discussion on Article Sixteen as a whole? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I'm going to try that one more time. Uh, oh, no, that's a, yeah, that's a majority vote, that's why. Uh, all in favor of Article Sixteen?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, we're going to have to count this one, because it's, it's too close. This is only a, a majority vote. Uh, so for the count, we have two counters. They'll each count a side of the room. If you are in favor of Article Sixteen as amended, please raise your pink vote ticket. Uh, all right, so on Article Sixteen, now raise your pink vote ticket if you already know on Article Sixteen. The number of yeses on Article Sixteen was thirty-five, the number of nos was seventeen. Article Sixteen is adopted by the majority. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by adding a new section, eleven point three two, to set the number of recreational marijuana retailers to zero percent and not allow recreational retail sales within the town of Freetown. A copy of the proposed bylaw may be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office located at 3 North Main Street, Asonah, Mass. 02702, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The Board of Selectmen also recommend this article. Because this is a zoning, uh, article, we will again hear from the Planning Board.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Demaris, Freetown Planning Board Chairman. Planning Board does recommend adoption of this article with a change, with an amendment. Mr. Moderator, I would move that we amend Article Seventeen by striking the numbers eleven point three two and inserting the numbers eleven point three five in its place. Additionally, I would move to amend Article Sixteen by striking the word, I'm sorry, Article Seventeen by striking the word "percent" and the "percent" symbol.
All right, so Article Seventeen, there's a motion on the floor to amend, uh, Section Eleven Point Three Two to read eleven point three five, and to take out the word "percent" and the "percent" symbol, which is basically the same amendments that were made on the last article.
Kevin, uh, is the number to be, uh, eleven point three four or three five?
Because we adopted, uh, Articles Fifteen-
Because we adopted Articles 15, that would be 11.34, so additionally, the next in line would be 11.35. I know it said 11.34 originally, but it should be 11.35 since we adopted the bylaw.
Okay, so we will now, do we have any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. We'll vote on, the amendment requires only a majority vote. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed to the amendment? The amendment is adopted by the majority. We'll now move to, we need a main motion on the article? Okay, a motion is now made and seconded to adopt Article 17 as amended, correct? All right. Is there any discussion on Article 17 as amended? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I believe that that was two-thirds, but I will count it since we counted the last one. So if we can have the counters again, hold up your pink ticket if you are voting yes to Article 17 as amended. Okay, and now hold up your pink tickets if you are voting no on Article 17 as amended. The number of yeses on Article 17 is 41. The number of nos is 12. Article 17 has met the two-thirds majority and is adopted. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 64N, Section 3A, as amended by Section 13 of Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, and to authorize the town to impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3 percent of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer as a consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to approve is read.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 18 as read. Is there any discussion?
Is this applied to medical retail, retail also, or medical sales? Or is this just recreational retailers?
Just recreation.
So there's no benefit from the medical?
The statute doesn't apply to medical marijuana.
Are there any other questions or discussion on Article 18? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 18 is adopted unanimously. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by amending Section 11.33, excuse me, Medical Marijuana Overlay District, by re-titling it to Medical and Recreational Marijuana Overlay District, and by amending text throughout to include recreational marijuana establishments within the overlay district. Further, to amend the title of the Medical Marijuana Overlay District as depicted on a map on file in the office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board to Medical and Recreational Marijuana Overlay District, amend Section 11.18H1 Table of Use Regulations to include recreational marijuana establishments as depicted below. Further, to amend the town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11 zoning bylaws outlined, to reflect all the aforementioned proposed changes. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format. And for the table, the use is recreational marijuana establishments, and in all zones, it is allowed only within the Medical and Recreational Marijuana Overlay District by special permit. The text of these proposed amendments and associated materials may be viewed at the office of the Town Clerk, as well as the Planning Board Office at Freetown Town Hall, 3 North Main Street, Asonet, Mass., during normal business hours, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. We will now hear from the Planning Board.
Kevin Demaris, Freetown Planning Board. Again, the Planning Board does recommend adoption of this change. What we did here tonight, folks, is we voted to have no retail recreational marijuana facilities, and we also voted to have one, so which means it's gonna go to the ballot. So should it fail at ballot and reverts back to, council, correct me, please, Mark, reverts back to the 20 percent or the one, we thought it prudent to be out in front of this and to designate areas where they would be allowed by special permit. And we took into consideration where we allow the medical marijuana grow facilities, R and D, and that type of activity. So we recommended the same type of activity be allowed on the retail side. That is, in the I-1 and I-2, Churchill and Banks property in South Asonet, if you will, and then the Ridge Hill Road, the Campanelli Drive area, where we already have a facility sighted there, permitted there. Thank you, sir, waiting to put a shovel over the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, let's have a motion on Article 19. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 19 as read. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 19? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 19 is adopted unanimously. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend, yes, to see if the town will vote, will amend the town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11 Zoning Bylaws, Section 11.23 Site Plan Review, by deleting Section 11.23O appeals in its entirety and inserting in place thereof a new Section 11.23O appeals. Furthermore, to amend the town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11 Zoning Bylaws, Section 11.23 Site Plan Review, by amending Section 11.23C applicability to clarify language related to vehicle trips. A copy of the proposed changes to the town of Freetown Protective Bylaws may be viewed at the office of the Town Clerk or the Planning Board Office, Freetown Town Hall, 3 North Main Street, Asonet, Mass., and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee has no recommendation on this article. We will now hear again from the Planning Board.
Learning my take tonight, Mr. Moderator. Okay, the Planning Board, again, Kevin Demaris, Freetown Planning Board Chairman, we do recommend for adoption here at a special town meeting. Basically, what this does is it changes the appeal period that exists from 30 days to 20 days. It keeps it in line with our existing appeal periods for subdivisions and other applications. It also clarifies the language relative to vehicle trips. It uses a more common vernacular, that's all.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 20 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 20 is adopted unanimously. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 56, which shall require persons engaging in the business of conducting or maintaining an open-air parking space to obtain a license by the local licensing authority and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. It's not a zoning, it doesn't require a recommendation. All right, so there is a motion to, and seconded to adopt Article 21 as read. A question that came, was there gonna be a recommendation? No, because this is not a zoning bylaw, it's just adopting a statute. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 21?
Sure. For clarification, again, Kevin, the Planning Board. Question was, what's an open-air parking lot? You drive down South Main Street?
Right.
You look to your left before there's any storage? All those UPS trucks and containers and stuff that are there? Something along those lines, okay? So what, over time, there's been a few applications, there's been discussions with new businesses that have come into town. Truck traffic seemed to be a concern. We have trucks that will sometimes trespass and park on private property. We have other times where private property owners don't really mind if they park over there. What this does is it gives another tool for the local community, selectmen by chief, I believe the police chief may be involved with the permitting. If anybody wanted to have a facility like that, that would allow for parking as a business, then they would have to go and get a license. And if they could not live up to the conditions of the license, then they would, I believe, have the ability to be denied. So while it's not a zoning, it wouldn't be coming to us for any kind of special permit, this is kind of, it just catches all the loose ends. It stops somebody from having a vacant lot, I'm saying the Asonet, and allowing tractor trailers, if you will, to park on there, stay there any length of time. We're looking to prohibit that and remedy some of the congestion that we have down there.
Is there any further?
Would this apply to one-day parking permits? People, Fourth of July, you know? No? Okay.
So Mary's asked if this would apply to one-day things, like, you know, event selling for the Fourth of July?
Right, my understanding, Mr. Moderator, this is in mind of those doing a business for profit. Additionally, if there are permits that need to be applied for, that would be given that one-day liquor license, one-day event, one-day food handler, that kind of stuff, those types of activities, the parking at all would be covered by that. It's a good question, Mary, it was asked during a public, or public discussion that we had about it, and that was the answer.
Do we have any, Brad, do we have any rules or regulations set now for this type of thing? Are you gonna make them up as it goes along now if this is passed?
I'm gonna imagine you didn't mean that the way it came out. We do. Parking typically is associated with another activity, okay? Parking's associated with a stop-and-shop facility, it's associated with a small restaurant. So the parking is taken care of, our rules and regulations. We do have a parking bylaw within our site plan review, within our special permit rules and regulations. We do have things that address the parking. This is for the, again, this is a catch-all. The type of facility that was built on South Main Street, and I say facility, it's a parking lot. But that type of activity was not in our bylaws anywhere, okay? So what this does, again, is it gives us an extra tool to say, okay, that type of activity, you need to get a license from the town to do that. You need to satisfy the Board of Selectmen, the police chief, the fire chiefs, and interested parties to see if that type of activity should be allowed where it is and how we permit.
Are there any more questions or discussion on Article 21? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 21 is adopted unanimously. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11 Zoning Bylaws, Section 11.31B Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements Allowed Reduction, with struck-through language deleted and bolded and underlined language inserted as depicted below, and as may also be viewed at the office of the Planning Board and the Town Clerk, Freetown Town Hall, 3 North Main Street, Asonet, Mass., and/or take any action relative thereto. I'm gonna read this without the struck-through language, so this would be as you would be voting to adopt it. B Allowed Reduction and Waiver of Requirements. The number of spaces may be reduced to less than that stipulated below, and deviation from other regulations stated in this section may be granted. If, in acting on the plan under Section 11.23 Site Plan Review and/or as the special permit granting authority, the Planning Board determines that the proposed number of spaces and/or the proposed parking arrangement would be adequate for all parking needs because of such special circumstances as shared parking for uses having peak parking demands at different times, unusual age or other characteristics of site users, or user-sponsored demand reduction devices such as carpooling. Such relief is contingent upon evidence being provided to the Planning Board that the site has sufficient reserve area suitable for conversion to graded, surfaced, and drained paving areas to meet the demands of the proposed use. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article, and we will now hear from the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends adoption of this article, and I would make a motion that we adopt the article as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 22 as printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion on Article 22? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 22 is adopted unanimously. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to adopt Article 29, Registration and Maintenance of Abandoned, Vacant, and/or Foreclosed Properties Bylaw as on file with the office of the Town Clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a majority vote because it is not a zoning bylaw. The Finance Committee recommends this article. There is no report necessarily on it. Motion was made and seconded as read, but, yes.
I've an amendment to therea.
There's a numerical amendment, he's just trying to find it.
I move to amend Article 23 by striking the words "Article 29" and inserting in place thereof the words "Article 32".
Okay, so the, all right, the motion now, is there a second to that?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to amend Article 23 by changing Article 29 to Article 32. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Fine then. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Oh, oh, nope, we haven't finished the vote. You can come up and ask, it's all right. This is just on the amendment right now.
Oh, on the amendment.
Yep, you can stay, because we'll get to the other one in a second. All right, so we had, all right, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment is adopted unanimously. We're now back on the main motion, which is to adopt Article 23 as amended. Go ahead.
Greg Carr, Main Street, can you just give a quick definition of the length of time for something to be abandoned or vacant?
There is no specific time on there. What it does is it allows for the evidence of abandonment to be considered when you will be enforcing this bylaw. If you would indulge, and I'll just read right quick what the definition of vacant is. Any real property which is not being actively used or occupied, and which has not been actively used or occupied within the preceding 90 days. This definition shall not apply to property which is undergoing renovations or repairs due to fire or the casualty. For the purposes of this bylaw, vacant also includes abandoned and/or foreclosed or foreclosing properties. Excepting from this definition is residential property that is temporarily vacant due to owner's seasonal absences.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
Yes, Paul Lubin, Free Town. How about if the property's, if the property owner is paying taxes on the property, is that, can that be considered vacant? You have a piece of property where the person is not using it, they're still in town, they're paying taxes on the property. Could you force them to, no, do this?
Again, I think it reverts back to the evidence of abandonment. What this, what the purpose of this is, unfortunately, far too often in a lot of our neighborhoods, there are homes that, for whatever reason, have gone unoccupied, uncared for. They may be foreclosed. They may be in the process of being foreclosed. Oftentimes, they're bank-owned, mortgage company-owned. And they don't get the attention that they need. Grass isn't grown. They don't clean the yards up. And that can lead to a reduction in property values. It could have any number of issues. It's an attractive nuisance to kids in the neighborhood. So we're trying to get the town away to reach out to these property owners, if you will, of abandoned property, neglected property. This gives us the authority to deal with them.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article twenty-three? Okay, again, this was submitted by the planning board, but it's not a zoning bylaw, so it does not require a two-thirds vote. It's just a majority vote. All in favor of Article twenty-three as amended?
Aye.
Oops, oh, come right on up. I'm sorry.
What are the consequences of not maintaining the standard of appearance?
Again, I don't want to be nitpicky about wording, but we're not talking about keeping a standard of appearance. And I know, I think I know what you meant, but this isn't, this isn't because you don't like the look of your neighbor's house, or they don't paint the house the right color or anything. This is truly for those properties that have become abandoned. We all, we all know the type of properties that I'm talking about. The grass is three feet high. Nobody's been in the house. The screen door is falling off the front, broken windows, chimneys collapsing. Right now, the town doesn't have the, excuse me, to collapse your property owners to get them at least to minimal safety compliance. So there are, there are fines that could be levied for any number of, and additional penalties that could be levied for any number of violations, if you will. I can give you a copy of this if you'd like, rather than me reading the entirety to you, but basically, it's that's, that's the simple problem that we're faced with. We have abandoned properties, you know, that are eyesore's in our neighborhood, eyesore's in our community. And we're looking to give the town some authority to go after these banks and say, listen, you know, all we ask is just to keep them clean, keep them safe for the rest of us.
Are there any additional questions or discussions on, discussion on Article twenty-three? I'm going to look very carefully this time. All right, so once again, Article twenty-three as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, that only requires a majority vote. The majority did vote in favor, so Article twenty-three is adopted by majority. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven, Zoning Bylaws, Section two, Definitions, to include a definition for truck terminal and truck stop as outlined below. Truck terminal. A building or area in which freight brought by truck is assembled and/or stored for routing or reshipment, or in which semi-trailers, including tractor and/or trailer units, and other trucks are parked and stored for a duration in excess of twenty-four hours. Truck stop. A. A facility devoted in whole or in part to the sale of fuel and/or oil and/or services for transient trucks and/or where the trucks are allowed to park while the operator or any other person sleeps or rests in the cab. B. A facility which in addition to providing fuel and/or oil and/or services to trucks and/or their operators also provides on-premises facilities for any, all, or some of the following elements: overnight accommodations primarily for truck drivers, shower facilities, laundry facilities, or lounges or recreation rooms. C. Any property where more than one truck is allowed to park as part of its regular business activities for periods of time longer than is necessary for obtaining fuel and/or services for truck or driver. D. Any property except a state-provided parking area where more than one truck is allowed to park on a more or less regular basis, and no work is being performed, and no services for truck or driver are required. E. Truck, for the purpose of this bylaw, shall mean a transient tractor-trailer as a combined unit or as either unit singly or a transient truck with three or more axles. Further, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven, Zoning Bylaws, Section eleven point one eight, Zoning Districts, I Table of Use Regulations, by including truck terminal and truck stop in the table allowed only by special permit in the industrial and industrial two districts, prohibited in all other districts. See proposed additions to the Table of Use Regulations below. As it said, truck terminal and truck stop both are allowed by special permit in industrial and industrial two, and they are not allowed in any other zone. A copy of the proposed changes to the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws may be viewed at the office of the town clerk or the planning board, Free Town Hall, three North Main Street, Asonet, Mass., and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article, and we will now hear from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Kevin, planning board chairman. The planning board recommends adopt, that we would adopt this article. And basically, just a brief history. Again, we've seen increase in activity in certain areas of town. Tractor-trailer traffic seems to be a point of interest, a point of concern with a number of people. We've had a recent application come in where the good old rumor mill had this as being a truck terminal and truck stop. It's not, but we were looking again to try and get out in front of that so that these types of places would not be allowed outside of the industrial or industrial two zone. And additionally, it would only be allowed with a special permit, which would allow for other boards and committees to weigh in on the proposal and the project. Additionally, the public would have a chance to comment also.
I will need a motion on Article twenty-four. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-four as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-four? Quiet.
On the District one, Vincent, from the South Main Street. The current zoning law, does this prohibit or prevent any truck stops currently in districts? Because they want to amend the zoning law. So why do they want to amend the zoning law? Does it prohibit truck stops now?
Right now, our table of use is silent on the truck stop, truck terminal. Okay? So I know you folks get sick and tired of us coming up here, but every once in a while, we see these things, we have to react quickly, otherwise, we can have things that, you know, we might not want. So what this does is it prohibits it everywhere except industrial and industrial two by special permit. Right now, again, our zoning doesn't speak to it. So one interpretation would be it would be allowed in most places. We're going to, we're just going to clean it up a little bit so that we know it's only allowed in those two places, and they don't have to come to us.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article twenty-four?
No. When we say we're amending, we have a table of use. It's rather extensive. In order to change that or add or to, that's amending that table of use. So that's what we're doing. By adding truck terminal and truck stop, it's amending our existing table of use.
Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Hearing none. The motion was to adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-four is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter one fourteen, Section twenty-three, to approve the revised cemetery rules and regulations adopted by the Cemetery Commission on September eleventh, twenty seventeen, and/or take any action relative thereto. A copy of these additions is on file with the town clerk at the town hall in Asonet. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-five as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-five is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to amend Article seventeen point three B license fees of the Town of Free Town General Bylaws by adding the following subsection and/or take any action relative thereto. One, no fee shall be charged for a dog license to any resident who is seventy years of age or over. This exemption will be limited to one dog license per household and will exclude kennels. This was submitted by the animal control officer and the town clerk. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-six as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-six is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to confirm that the several parcels of land held by the Conservation Commission under the authority of Section eight C of Chapter forty are the general laws and that varies other park, recreation, or open space parcels otherwise held by the town under relevant statutes are also held under the protections of Article ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution and devoted to conservation, recreation, and/or utilization of agricultural, mineral, forest, water, air, and other natural resources, and/or take any action relative thereto. A schedule of the parcels affected by this article is on file with the office of the town clerk and incorporated hearing by reference. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt this article as read. Is there any discussion on the article? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-seven is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel land located at one twenty-two Richmond Road, Asonet, Assessor's Map two oh two, Lot four point zero one from the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes to the Conservation Commission under provisions of Section eight C of Chapter forty of the general laws and further to dedicate and designate the parcel for conservation purposes subject to the protections of Article ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a two-thirds vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-eight as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-eight is adopted unanimously. Before we get to Article twenty-nine, there are three members from the Finance Committee in the front row. Are there any other Finance Committee members here that have come in late or anything of that nature? Okay. At this time, Article twenty-nine. The Finance Committee did not take action on this article. We are not permitted by our bylaws to vote on this article without some sort of report from the Finance Committee. So I will ask for a motion to table Article twenty-nine. Motion is made and seconded to table Article twenty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-nine is tabled unanimously. Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.